2024 Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Brian Sanchez and I am the Chairman of the ZBA. With me today are Commissioners Swathi Staley, Adrian Soto, Angela Brooks, and Helen Schiller will be joining us in a little bit. I'd like to call this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. I will take a roll call vote to establish quorum. Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks. I am present. Quorum is established. The minutes... Oh, Commissioner Schiller. I am present. Quorum is established. The minutes of August meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley. Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks. I vote yes. The minutes are approved. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Brooks seconds. Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes. The agenda is approved. Now we will go ahead and take any continuances and withdrawals for the morning session. If you have a continuance or withdrawal, please come forward.
Thank you, Chairman. Jim Mulgeen, I'm the attorney on matter 388-24-C on behalf of the applicant CK Construction.
Sorry, which one was that?
It's on page 6, 388-24-C.
Okay.
Looking for a continuance on that one.
All right, so calendar number 38824Z will be continued to November 15, the 2:00 PM call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I have two cases. There are one case, one situation. 36824Z and 36924Z on page 2, 1936 North Sedgwick. The alderman, we have a letter of support. We had a unanimous support at the community, but they had a long scheduled out-of-town, so we respectfully ask for a continuance.
Okay. Calendar numbers 36824Z and 36924Z will be continued to November 15, the 2:00 PM call. No further notice will be given.
Thank you very much.
Any other continuances or withdrawals for the 9:00 AM call? Seeing none, Victor, call the first case.
This is the name of the continuing matter, case 8524A, 2133 to 35 West Charles.
Okay. Would everyone planning to testify on this matter please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Counselor. You can proceed.
Mr. Chairman, Amy Kurson from the law firm Reyes Kurson, on behalf of Leah Moskoff, who has filed her appeal of a decision by the zoning administrator. To make this matter go a little faster, as you can see, we've submitted voluminous bits of material. So let me just get sort of you oriented to the case, and I'll bring up a couple of procedural points that I think will be material, and then we'll go quickly through everything else.
All right, and before you begin, I just want to say that, you know, there's four approval criteria for the administrative adjustment that was granted, and I want you to stick to those criteria because if we stray, I'm going to cut it off as irrelevant, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Ms. Moskoff submitted the very large notebook of materials there in front of you, and I want to make sure that that is part of the record to...
It's submitted into the record.
Thank you. We have also created, to help the board today, these smaller packages that will orient you through the hearing, and I would ask that those materials also be included in the record.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, we're asking to reverse the zoning administrator's decision. There are errors in the application for the administrative adjustment that justify the reversal solely on the basis of the errors. So I'm going to go through those since they're a little more technical, and then we'll have some testimony from our witnesses. If we could please first turn to tab 1 in the small booklet in front of you. Error number one is that the application and the legal notice that was transmitted did not identify the correct owner at the time the materials were submitted. Both the application and the legal notice have an affidavit that requires you to swear who the owner is.
What... Which criteria does this apply to?
This is just a technical error, sir, that would apply to the zoning administrator would not have the authority to grant an application that did not meet the most elemental requirement of the application.
And what are you relying on for that position?
Well, I am relying on portions of the municipal code that require an applicant to be...
Which one?
And also, the proper remedy for that is found at 1716-0505, which is revocation of the permit. At the time the application was filed, it appears that it was intentionally an obfuscation of who the correct owner of the property was. In fact, ownership of the property had been transferred 12 days earlier. I can go through with you the elements of when property actually is transferred, but we have included that information here in tab 1 under "Sale." There's a copy of the deed, and the transfer stamps indicate that that transfer happened 12 days before the application was filed. Moreover, when Ms. Moskoff endeavored to find out who the applicant was, the former owner, who I guess applied, even though he was not the owner, and even though there were affidavits and a legal notice that said he was the owner, he provided a text to Ms. Moskoff saying that he would not identify who the new owner was. So on that basis alone, the zoning administrator did not have the authority to grant this approval. We have a second technical matter. We have a second technical matter. Mr. Chairman, may I move on?
Please.
The second technical matter is that the zoning administrator acted beyond his authority. The, the survey that was submitted by the applicant, by the person asking for the administrative adjustment, indicated that the setback should be just twenty five, sorry, that the required setback would be twenty five point five feet.
Which, which criteria are we talking about now?
Again, this is a technical error that the zoning administrator did not have the authority to grant a relief.
Pursuant to what?
According to seventeen thirteen one zero zero three dash one, the zoning administrator does not have the authority to grant a setback relief greater than fifty percent, which he did in this case. In this case, fifty percent is thirteen point six five, not twelve point seven five. So remember, it's a little confusing here. It sounds like he granted less, but the point is that he allowed the house to be closer up to the street than he should have. So he, the zoning administrator said it could be twelve point seven five feet from the road instead of had he exercised his discretion properly, and we'll put on a case that says he didn't, but had he exercised it properly, it could only have been thirteen point six five feet from the road, not twelve point seven five from the property line. And we've included information about how Ms. Moskov, before the zoning administrator granted the approval, she submitted surveys that showed that there were errors in the surveys submitted by the applicant, and the zoning administrator ignored that information.
This is tab two?
Yes, sir. The distances were also re-verified by Ms. Moskov at her expense with new surveys that were submitted as part of this appeal.
Okay.
Error number three, which this also is a technical error. When the zoning administrator sent out his notice that the administrative adjustment had been approved, the letter is dated November seventeenth. However, it was not posted in the mail until December eighteenth.
So what, which, which criteria are we talking about?
Again, had the zoning. This criteria would be, I don't. This criteria again goes back to seventeen sixteen zero five oh five, where the zoning administrators, the permit should be revoked because the administrator failed to conform to the requirements to send out the notice timely. It's also a violation of the applicant Ms. Moskov's due process to not have enough time to file her appeal. Now, I will note for the record that she did, by some miracle, she received the letter advising her about the zoning approval on December twenty sixth. So she had to calculate back from November seventh.
I'm sorry, this is a notice argument?
Yes, sir.
Notice is waived.
We'll move on to the next argument. The zoning administrator exceeded his authority when he failed to follow the standards and the discretionary standards of the ordinance. So, Mr. Chairman, we move to tab four.
Which, which section? I want to keep, I just want to make sure that, for the sections, that which ones we're talking about.
I am. Tab four indicates the criteria that you are referencing, and we will stick very closely to those today. I would note for the board, the third section down in tab four, seventeen thirteen one zero zero seven B, the general criteria, one, two, and three. So we will go swiftly through these today. I do think, however, it's imperative for us to just orient the board to what we're talking about. So I'm going to ask Ms. Moskov to describe her, her property and the community.
Well, I'd like to start by saying that.
Hold on. We've, we've read the material, it's voluminous. We know what we're here for, so I'd like you to just go get to the argument.
Okay. Again, for the sake of the board to be oriented with the timeline of what happened here. Ms. Moskov entered negotiations with Mr. Sablon, the person who has identified as the applicant on this application. She entered negotiations with him nearly a year and a half before he filed for the administrative adjustment. As you can see from the very front cover of the small booklet that I provided to you, there are photographs, and these are from a shadow study. The first, the first line drawing shows the conditions that existed before the adjacent homes were torn down. Ms. Moskov's house is pictured in green. Ms. Moskov had negotiated the L scheme with Mr. Sablon. This is material, sir, to whether or not the, the administrative adjustment and the zoning administrator had a mitigation of adverse impacts. And we, we will prove that there were no mitigations of adverse impacts, but there was a scheme that had been negotiated, shown here as the L scheme, that is a complete mitigation of the adverse impacts. So I just want to get the board sort of oriented to that and make it clear that there were many, many months of negotiations. Ms. Moskov, I'm just going to ask you quickly. You provided a copy of a letter to Sablon, to the zoning administrator, before the zoning administrator granted that administrative approval, and that letter indicated the different ways that the harms to your property, that letter indicated what the harms were to your property, is that correct?
Correct.
And the letter, into the microphone, please. And that letter also indicated that the L shape would have mitigated those impacts, is that correct?
That's correct.
I have a question. As a matter of right, without even seeking an administrative adjustment, if the property owner had just built a property as a matter of right, would it have affected this tree that we're here for?
It's not just the tree, Mr. Chairman, and we have.
Okay, but let's answer that question first, though. Would it have affected the tree if he had built as a matter of right?
The impacts are much worse with the design that was approved than would have been by right.
How, how so?
Well, if you'll allow me to run through the questions, we can, we can show you. Okay. The as-of-right position is at the bottom, number four, on the images that are provided to you. Bear with me, Chairman.
I have another question, because you did say that it's not just about the tree. What else is it about? Because I came away from reading everything as this being all about the tree.
No, sir. Let me just ask a question to Ms. Moskov, then I had to find in my notes. Ms. Moskov, you submitted a package of materials to the zoning administrator. You submitted one in June twenty twenty three. You didn't hear back from the zoning administrator whether that application had been approved. You resubmitted the same materials again in October twenty twenty three, is that correct?
Correct.
And those materials, did they confirm that if the developer is allowed to build the house according to the administrative adjustment at just twelve point seven five feet from the street instead of twenty seven point three as required by the ordinance, it would create adversity to your property?
Yes, that's correct.
Can you list the types of adversity?
Well, there won't be enough light to sustain my garden. My tree is unlikely to survive. There'll be a severe loss of accustomed privacy around my tree in the front of my home and the front deck. It also illustrates that the loss of light into my home and the loss of crossbreeds and free flow of air is significant. It also illustrates that my safety might be compromised because my house will be situated in the back of a darkened tunnel with a long path to the front of the house with very limited sightlines from the street or sidewalk. There will be a significant loss in curb appeal, which would significantly impact its market value, and there'll be a loss in my quality of life living in the back of a darkened tunnel.
And Ms. Moskov, the materials that you submitted demonstrated the loss of your privacy, is that correct?
Correct.
And they demonstrated the damage to your garden, not just the tree, is that correct?
Correct.
And your house has been featured in garden walks, so your garden is actually very important to the property, is that correct?
Correct, it's part of the community.
And you submitted materials to the zoning administrator demonstrating that there would be a substantial loss in property value, is that correct?
Correct.
You also submitted shadow studies that showed how dramatic the effects would be if you were a person who needs sunlight to have a sense of wellness, that even your own sunlight would be deprived, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, the zoning administrator can only grant an administrative adjustment in cases where there is an unnecessary inconvenience to the applicant or to the developer. Ms. Moskov, did the zoning administrator or the applicant ever explain to you what the specific unnecessary inconvenience is?
No, they didn't, and I also searched through FOIA, and there was no such record of citing a reason.
So even though you didn't know what the owner's unnecessary inconvenience was, you gave the zoning administrator information anyway that any unnecessary inconvenience could be mitigated, right?
That's correct.
What evidence did you provide the zoning administrator that the administrative adjustment was inconsistent with eliminating the unnecessary inconvenience to the applicant as required by seventeen thirteen one zero zero seven B number two?
I provided documentation that explains a developer erecting one single-family home across the breadth of two lots is not facing an unnecessary inconvenience if that developer is required to make the new home conform to the setbacks required by code. I submitted an architect's affidavit, a review of a pre-construction consultant, and an assessment from an area developer. I also submitted comparative market analysis that demonstrated a margin of profit still exists when building a home with an as-of-right square footage. I submitted photographs of recently renovated property within walking distance of my house. The owners redeveloped that particular property into a luxury, single-family home that also spans two full lots and remains in the rear of the lot in accordance with the home's historical front setback and context of our neighborhood. These owners also submitted a letter stating that observing the historic setback created no inconvenience. They explained that keeping the historic front setback added value to their six thousand square foot, single-family home.
And what evidence did you provide to the zoning administrator, again, before he granted the administrative adjustment, that the proposed building creates rather than mitigates, to the maximum extent feasible, as required by seventeen thirteen one zero zero seven B number three, that it creates rather than mitigates adverse impacts resulting from this development?
I submitted evidence illustrating that Mr. Sablon did not mitigate any adverse impacts with the U-shaped design. He actually created more adversity than over an as-of-right plan. As I already mentioned, I'll lose significant light, air, safe access, privacy, market value, and quality life. But I'd like to address for a second the privacy issue and a couple other issues that aren't very obvious from the drawing. So under that courtyard cutout, what you might not be able to tell is that the basement itself does not share the U-shaped cutout. It's a big box design, so it has a foundation wall that runs along the west property line continuously from the front of the property all the way to the rear, thereby negating any benefit to the tree and severing its root system. In fact, the benefit for the tree, which appears to be giving it extra light from the canopy, is also more like window dressing because the, of the heights of the proposed home that received the adjustment is actually much taller than the tree itself. But the severance on the foundation negates anything that you're doing from the top of the canopy.
If I could just stop you, please.
Would the building, as a matter of right, sever the root system of the tree?
Not as, not as far, not as close to the road. So it would have cut some of the roots, but not as many of the roots, because it would have been set back twenty seven feet. Also, sir, if we could just, if I would ask the board, please, to turn to tab eight and look at the drawing that's in front of tab eight. So it's actually at tab seven, but the last page of tab seven. We have a cutout that illustrates what this building design is going to look like. It shows where the foundation comes down and cuts into the root systems of the tree, but that's not the only problem. The problem is that because of the difference in the street levels, Ms. Moskov has a set-down property, like the historic homes in Bucktown are three and a half feet lower than street level. The developer has measured, as they're allowed to do by zoning code, they're allowed to measure the height of their building from the street level. But what that results in is that Ms. Moskov's house looks tiny, and the developer house, which is on two lots, it's a single-family home on two lots, looks enormous. And the U-shaped cutout makes it so that, because of this height difference, the occupant of the new home will be able to step out onto their courtyard, look down into Ms. Moskov's yard, look across into the windows of her house. So they have deprived her both of the light to her garden, the benefits to her tree, and of her privacy by looking down into her garden, across onto her balcony, and into her windows. Ms. Moskov, did you submit to the zoning administrator information about the L-shaped house that Mr. Sablon said he would construct before he pulled out of that deal?
Yes, I did.
And did you share the shadow studies of the L-shaped house as well as documentation from your experts stating the compromise would spare your property, the blunt injury to your tree, the loss of your light, air, safety, access, market value, and quality of life?
Yes, I did. I don't know where you.
In what ways did the compromised L shape offer benefits to everyone that would have mitigated the adverse impacts to your home?
So the L shape salvages about one-half of the sun that sustains my landscape. It sustains one-third of the light to my property overall. It pulls my tree out of an at-risk position. It retains some of the yard, deck, and in-home privacy, retains crossbreeds and access to free flow of natural air, spares the value of my home by not destroying the landscape that is the primary driver to the curb appeal and market value, salvages my quality of life for adequate access to light, viewpoint, continuance of my mature landscape, which is the joy. I and the community take in my property. It offers increased safety for me coming and going with increased sightlines from the street and the sidewalk. It also supports typical urban development patterns in that it has a yard-to-yard and building-to-building interface. It offers more to the block by retaining a small fraction of the green open space the street has known and had as a part of its essential character, been a part of the community for over a hundred and forty years rather than sequestering it behind a towering closed wall. It takes a grossly incompatible outsized home, breaks up its imposing massing on the front line up, causing less detriment to the block's otherwise iconic uniformity. The L shape offered more to the developer over an as-of-right by increasing his square footage.
And so.
As-of-right, it, it, it blocks the tree more than it does the L shape, right? Is that true?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, can I, can I get an answer from the, from the witness?
I think what he's asking is, is the as-of-right here at the bottom.
Yeah, the as-of-right, the question is, the question is, the as-of-right shading would shade the tree more than the L shape, is that true?
I think I just want to answer by.
I'd like you to answer my question.
Okay, what was the question exactly?
The question is, the as-of-right shading of the tree is more than the L shading, is that true?
More than the L, correct.
Okay, okay. Continue.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think what Ms. Moskov is trying to say is that if the L shape had been then used, that would have mitigated the adverse impacts to the maximum extent possible as required by the code. But instead of using the L shape, the developer came in with a U shape, which is worse than the L and worse than by right. So there was, in fact, no mitigation to the maximum extent possible in this case. Just going back to the inconvenience to the developer, which was not identified for Ms. Moskov, but she did try to speculate about what that inconvenience may have been.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want, I don't need speculation.
I'm going to ask one quick question about that, which will sort of illustrate a point that the, that the administrative adjustment is not necessary to mitigate an inconvenience. Ms. Moskov, what is the total square footage gain from the L shape to the U shape for the developer?
Two hundred and ninety-six square feet. And I just want to point out, that's about the size of a walk-in closet in a home, that's nearly six thousand square feet.
The standards provide that the zoning administrator may include in the adjustment conditions that are necessary to reduce or minimize impacts on other properties. To your knowledge, were any such conditions imposed on the developer?
No, I, I received no such notice of any conditions.
And Ms. Moskov, with regard to the impact to you, are you anticipating a loss in market value to your home on the basis of this having been granted?
I am. I wanted to point out that I have submitted multiple broker price opinions that speculate on the potential loss, and they cited a hundred and twenty-five thousand up to the maximum, which is about four hundred thousand, which would basically be taking the value of the home, which is in the context of its current setting, and pulling it out of, it's, it's the garden and all of the natural things that support it. And then it might be reduced to the value of just a piece of land, like a piece of dirt.
Was there any evaluation done with regard to what would happen if they built? as a matter of right?
I mean, I think that's all addressed in the broker price opinion letters, there's three different statements.
I just, as I'm...
Yeah, I think that...
Sitting here, I don't know if that's part of it or not.
I believe that it's mentioned in there, yes.
Ms. Moskov, did the broker opinions and those experts offer any mitigation remedies for the loss of the market value?
All of the experts, including the brokers, agree that the L shape plan that we had compromised and agreed to its footprint would have mitigated adverse impacts to the maximum extent feasible.
And Ms. Moskov, in your opinion, did the zoning administrator err by failing to consider all of the information that you submitted before he issued his decision?
Yes, I think that he did. I addressed and supported every legal standard in the opposition packages that I filed in July and, again, filed in October. I think the zoning administrator made an incorrect decision by failing to fully take account of the substantive materials I submitted and by disregarding the expressly-written standards and approval criteria that govern administrative adjustments, and by ignoring the objections of the neighboring properties in the community at large.
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of time, we have included at tab 10 a list of the materials that Ms. Moskov submitted as compared to the purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance, which is one of the things that the zoning administrator is supposed to consider when determining whether or not to grant administrative adjustment. That dramatic...
I'm missing a tab 10.
It would be the last.
I've got it here.
Yeah. That dramatic tab 10 shows the voluminous material that Ms. Moskov submitted, along with each of the purposes and intents of the zoning ordinance, and so I would just urge the board to look at those materials. We won't list them for you here, but I do think it's important for you to look at those materials that were submitted, and we can address those if you have any questions. Certainly, the zoning administrator did not properly exercise his discretion if the adjacent homeowner was able to address all the purposes and intents of the zoning ordinance with information about how the administrative adjustment did not conform to the purposes and intents of the ordinance. Mr. Chairman, I would now like to move on to experts that we've brought with us and have some of those experts address the board.
So with regard to the, you know, I've submitted, or I've admitted your 700-plus-page submission into evidence, with regard to witnesses, they are not going to be allowed to testify. The question here is, how did the zoning administrator err when he made the decision? And so we do, he's been able to consider everything that's in that 700 and some-page submission, but new testimony now is not going to be accepted. So, but the affidavits and the reports are in the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask each of our witnesses if their testimony, if they were allowed to give it, would be consistent with their affidavits?
I will, I will take notice of the fact that they would testify consistent with their affidavits.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, we've brought those witnesses because they will go point by point, so that where the zoning administrator exercised his discretion, our experts will provide counterpoints saying that his discretion was improperly exercised, so that is the purpose of the experts.
Right.
I would like to just note my objection for the record and ask again.
Sure, your objection is noted, but your submission is where it needed to be if you were going to submit it, so that's, but your objection is noted for the record for any potential appeal.
Appreciate that very much. And, Mr. Chairman, I would also just like to note that we have also with us in support today State Representative Will Guzardi, who has come in support of his constituents in the community, and ask if the board would consider a brief statement.
The board is not going to take testimony on this matter that wasn't part of your submission.
Understood. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Moskov has a very brief closing statement she would like to make.
Mr. Chairperson and commissioners, thank you for hearing my appeal today. 27 years ago, I bought the worst house on the best block, and I spent most of my adult life putting everything into it with my own two hands. Someone is threatening to close the curtains on my property, walling me off from my community, and walling off our community from the open green space that has uplifted our streetscape and spirits for generations. When the neighbor's cottage and adjacent garage were demolished, we accepted change was coming. We had all hoped the developer would work with the community and build the sensitivity to the long-established existing conditions. The plan before you is not only unreasonable and insensitive, it delivers a staggering blow to the good stewards whose properties are already developed. We do not have the flexibility of starting from scratch on vacant lots. I did not buy a home in a canyon or in the back of a courtyard condominium complex. I bought a home next to a home exactly like mine with serial historic front setbacks affording each of us equal access to light, air, sightlines, privacy, and safety. I do not want to live in the back of a darkened tunnel under the shadows of an outsized big-box home that appears to exist unto itself, a home that takes all the advantages of my garden while simultaneously removing its advantage from me. My home, garden, and community are my everything. The proposed plan not only encroaches on the community and my property, it engulfs it. It is the perfect picture of what it looks like to have a developer push you out of your home. I am not an unnecessary inconvenience. This is my life's work, my life's savings. This is home. While I plan to live in my home another 27 years, this is all I have. The stakes could not be higher for me. I bought my cottage directly from an elderly couple who raised a family there and planted a tree. The day I picked up the keys from them, the wife was in tears, crying to her husband, "They're going to kill my tree." I made a promise to her there, and then I would always take care of her tree. While I don't think I understood the gravity of her loss when I was only 30, I get it now. Communities are made of more than a series of lot lines. They are made of people, good neighbors, like all the ones you see behind us here today who took time out of a workday to share with you just how important our community is to all of us and how important we are to one another. For the sake of our community, our block, the settlers who created Bucktown's intimate street walls, my tree, my garden, the value of my home, my quality of life, I implore you reverse a decision that put unmitigated adversity unto my property and our block. Just as I never asked for anything unreasonable in my efforts towards compromise over these last three years, overextending myself in good faith toward that and not once met by the same in return, I am not asking for anything unreasonable now. An as-of-right development saves less than one-third the existing light to my garden and home, a humble ask by any measure and the precise measure by which the front yard average ordinance mandates. With a plan that delivers greater injury than as-of-right, I beg you not only reverse this administrative decision, but by whatever means the board can, set precedent here that says we count, and that in the absence of consensus by at least the adjacent properties and as-of-right site development plan be enforced. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoning Administrator Murphy, your response, and obviously, I'm going to give you the same instruction, I want you to stick to the criteria as to the administrative adjustment that you granted. Proceed.
All right. Sticking to the criteria of the administrative adjustment, as it relates to the calculations that were done pursuant to the application that was filed, we are required to use the survey that is submitted in conjunction with the building permit. We do not or cannot get into dueling debates if there are discrepancies claimed about an applicant's survey. Surveys have to be provided by a state-certified surveyor. We have to presume that those calculations are made in accordance with the professional regulations that are enforced, and absent some obvious, you know, failure to comply with that, then we have to accept the information that's provided with the application. Therefore, the calculations that resulted from the survey that was submitted by the applicant resulted in, A, the front yard setback requirement of 25 and 1/2, and then correspondingly calculated to a 50% reduction, which was what the administrative adjustment was filed for.
The, with regard to the calculation where the appellant is saying that you got it wrong, did you review that argument?
You got it wrong in terms of the mathematical calculations.
Yes, the mathematical calculation.
We extensively, multiple times over, reviewed both the calculations related to the project site itself, the subject site, as well as those of the block, and, once we calculated the appropriate setback and then the allowed administrative adjustment setback, the criteria for the administrative adjustment requires that you look at the character of the block. So when we look at the other 13 residential parcels, excluding the two that the applicant was using for their subject site, 11 of the 13 parcels had a lesser degree of setback already existing than was being sought by the applicant through their administrative adjustment.
So are you saying that the calculation that you made is actually a correct calculation of the setback adjustment?
Based on the survey information that was provided by the applicant with their building permit, yes, sir. And the character assignment, or the character requirement in the administrative adjustment, was based on the, looking at the entirety of the block, not just the adjacent parcels, and the character of the block, 11 of the 13 parcels, again, were significantly less setback already provided than what was being sought through the administrative adjustment.
Did you consider, number four, any adverse impacts resulting from the administrative adjustment will be mitigated to the maximum extent feasible? What's your, what's your response to the statement that, you know, that wasn't complied with?
So when we look at mitigating impacts, we look at the impacts that are created through the administrative adjustment, not if the property were built to the by-right allot, or the by-right requirements or allowances. And in discussions with the applicant and their architect, we discussed both a removal or movement of the rear patio further away from the objector's property. We discussed relocation and movement of rear stairs and a door away from the applicant's property, and a lowering of the rear patio height to a lesser degree above grade, all of which were elements that were immediately proximate to the objector's residence.
And those, those things that you discussed, did the applicant actually comply with that in what they were proposing?
Yes, not in what they originally proposed, but in the version that was finally approved, yes.
Any questions from the board?
Was, did the applicant discuss with you the scheme that we've been provided that was an original compromise?
Well, I mean, I did speak to the applicant a number of times. I don't recall discussing one particular scheme, but regardless, the applicant is free to build a residential property that meets the requirements of the zoning code or falls within the allowances for administrative adjustments or other relief. We would not be in a position to dictate to them the style or positioning of home that they sought to choose. Save for the front setback issue, all other elements, all other calculations fall within as-of-right allowances, and we would not be able to impose upon them a requirement that they modify their home.
That wasn't my question, but thank you.
Sure.
I'm just trying to understand if, you were saying that you had discussions with them about various different options. So my question going to that is, was the option that the appellant is saying was discussed with them and was an originally agreed-upon alternative, was that ever a part of your conversation?
I don't know what was ever agreed to. We were not, I was not...
I'm just wondering, in your conversation with the applicant, did you ever talk about this potential L-shaped example? That's all I...
I do not, I do not recall that, no.
They ever bring it to you?
No, ma'am. No, I do not.
Any other questions from the board? And I see that we've got somebody here that appears to be on behalf of, I guess you're in support of the zoning administrator's decision?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, just, again, this is, this is an appeal on a zoning administrator's decision, so I'm not going to allow you to testify here. The issue is whether the zoning administrator erred based on the record at the time that he had to make that decision. So we're not going to hear your testimony today. Any other questions from the board?
I guess I will ask it, because I think I'm missing it. So when I'm looking at these, I don't know, by-right or the one, the L shape, or any of them, I guess the shadow, I don't, it seems like some of the issues that you're addressing would have still been there with the by-right allowance, and the relief that the zoning administrator granted doesn't preclude some of the development that would impact that, so I just, I'm just, I'm just having an issue visualizing that, and so if you can just kind of make it a little clearer for me, like maybe I'm a five-year-old, because...
Sure. I was certainly hopeful that just looking at the executive visual summary would just make it pretty clear, but if you look at the U scheme compared to by-right, the by-right salvages about one-third sightline, air, light to my property, and if you look at the U scheme, you can see I'm pretty well-swallowed-up-hole behind that in a darkened tunnel. If we were just basing it on one thing, I suppose that would be a different conversation, but it's a culmination of like five access points that I already ran through. Should I pull those up again?
No, you're good.
And I guess I also like, I'm not sure it was super clear, but if you look at that U shape, the inside of the U shape has windows all around, and so the tiny front portion, the tail, the windows on the inside of that, which are south-facing, will look directly into the front of my home, which is north-facing, so not only am I losing privacy, that, there's a deck looking, in that cutout, looking down and along my entire property line, but also the windows are interfacing, which is sort of why I reference being in a courtyard condominium complex. And then the as-of-right gives me a bit more privacy, because it's just like a wall without that, and you can see it spares me some outlook, some air, some light. That was helpful, thank you. I add one tiny thing to that about the by-right.
Go ahead.
Just for the whole block, we are, on the subject side, it's all worker cottages and the whole front line up, and something so out of context on that block and so out of scale in design and just massing, having it step back that requisite front setback of 27.3 just sort of breaks up that massing for the rest of the block and spares the injury of breaking that uniformity just a bit for the rest of the community.
Are there any other properties that are set on the rear of the property, like, property line like yours is?
There are...
On this block?
There were originally four.
How about, how about now?
There's two of us now, if you don't count the subject. And the four that were are all in the center of the block, so we sort of, we're like a park.
Do you know the, the address of the one, of the other one that is like yours?
Well, besides the ones that are next to me, it's basically right across the street from the subject. I could take a guess at the address, the 202140. Do you guys know Mike's address?
Mr. Chairman, tab...
You're talking about across the street?
Right across from the subject.
Tab five has photographs of the block, and those illustrate that these are mostly single-lot homes with gabled roofs, so the massing of the proposed building of the developer on two lots in a square shape of the U also is out of context.
Chairman.
Go ahead.
Objecting to that simply on the basis that properties which are across the street, across a public right-of-way, are not included in either the front setback calculation in these purposes, nor the properties that are subject to the administrative adjustment evaluation. It deals with properties on the block. We would not have looked on the opposite side of the street, even were all of the homes set back to the rear of the property line.
I understand. Any other questions from the board?
I do have one, just from a clarification standpoint, so the shadow studies, there seems to be inconsistent...
So the shadow studies, there seems to be inconsistent dates that these projected shadow studies are intended to represent. So for example, the U shape in tab 8 reflects a date of August 15th, and the by right study references a date of April 1st. I'm looking at, don't know if there's the L-shaped compromise that appears that that's a date of June 21st. Is there a rationale for the varying dates? And is that to, how can we sort of understand, from a consistency standpoint, what the impact would be on any given day?
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have leave to allow Ryan Soros, the person who prepared the shadow studies, to address this question?
Go ahead.
So I think, I think it might be a little more clear to go a little bit beyond in tab 8. There's, so you could kind of clearly understand the U shape in relation to the as-existed condition?
Can you lift up what page you're on?
Uh, I don't know if there's a page number on here, but it's, it's in the middle of page, or tab 8, there's two small plans, top and bottom, sight plans.
Says 8:00 AM, June 21st, is that the date?
Right, so 8:00 AM, June 21st, and 8:00 AM, June 21st. This would probably be the best. The reason there are so many other dates is because I've did multiple shadow studies over the course of three years. So, they happened, when I output that, it might have been that date and time. But, I think the key to understand in all this is that June 21st is a worst-case, or best-case scenario for light, because we have it higher in the sky. So imagine that in spring, all these get degraded even further. So, if you look at 8:00 AM and June 21st, when it's highest in the sky with the U shape, Ms. Moskov has basically lost 85% of her light. Whereas as existed, you're probably in 50%, and that was even with trees, big trees casting shadows onto her lot. So, I think these, that's probably the best logic to confirm there actually truly is loss of light.
I appreciate that. Is there one that shows the difference between the as-existed and the as-of-right? Is there one that shows as-of-right?
Uh, yes, there is. Go three more pages. So there's an as-existed at the top, it looks like a big, just generic rectangle, with an attached garage in the back. So, you pass the L scheme, and then you're at the as-of-right scheme. And you could see, even the as-of-right casts that tree essentially in shadow. So it does impact it, but it's going to impact it less severe than the proposed.
So, okay, so the the, let me just make sure, am I looking at the one that's the, that's the, this is the as-of-right?
So, I mean, I visually evaluated these, and like, as existed, I saw it March, like, and this is kind of a visual evaluation. But as, March 8:00 AM, as existed, 50% of the yard received direct sun at 8:00. In June, it was 85%. So that's like, almost full sun early in the morning, as kind of is right now. With the proposed development, basically 0% of the yard receives direct sun at 8:00 AM in March, and in June, like, 15% receives direct sun. So I mean, it is kind of a significant percentage.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No, I don't think so.
Counselor, brief closing.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of cross-examination questions for the zoning administrator.
Go ahead.
Mr. Administrator, did you issue written findings of facts to support your decision?
We issued our approval letter. We have notations and discussions that were done amongst staff and the examiners that are contained in the file that we maintained for the property.
Were those notations made available to Ms. Moskov when she filed the FOIA?
If they are available pursuant to FOIA regulations, then they would be available to her if she requested.
But if they were just notes, those would not have been released to Ms. Moskov?
I'm not a FOIA expert, so I would rely on the city's Department of Law.
Okay, let the record reflect that Ms. Moskov has not received written findings of fact that indicate the decision, although we do have a copy of the decision. Mr. Administrator, what was the unnecessary inconvenience to the developer in this case?
The unnecessary inconvenience was that city council has laid out a path whereby applicants can seek a degree of relief pursuant to administrative adjustment regulations in lieu of having to take a more arduous step of coming to the zoning board of appeals for a variation for same or similar relief.
So the unnecessary inconvenience was coming before this board?
And the expense and the time that is associated with that compared to that with the administrative adjustment.
And Ms. Moskov submitted expert reports, maps, photos, and analysis to your office in July, and in October 23, before you issued your decision. What was the basis of your decision to reject that information and find that the administrative adjustment had no appreciable adverse impact on the general welfare of the surrounding property owners as required by 1713-1007B2?
As I stated before, we took into account the many comments, emails, and information that were received from the objector. There may have also been other residents of the block that submitted information. And in our discussions, as I explained to the board with the applicant and architect, we made modifications that we believed were most directly impacting the portions of the property that were immediate to her home and the western property line, and therefore used that agreement and understanding with the applicant to accept that as the mitigation and proceed with accepting the administrative adjustment request.
You indicated that, who, who did you work with to try to figure out what the mitigation would be?
Our staff, and we discussed with the applicant.
But nobody brought Ms. Moskov in for those conversations?
Our office did not.
Or her experts. You rejected an organized mountain of evidence in opposition. What could Ms. Moskov have submitted that would have changed your mind?
I would never, I would not say that we rejected any of the information that was submitted. We reviewed what was submitted, and we took that into account in light of the other regulations that pertain to administrative adjustments, specifically those that call out looking at the character of the block as opposed to that which is specific to one individual property.
Would you consider the relief of 13% of the size of the lot to be just a minor modification to the setback?
I don't know that 13% equates to the volume of the residence, if that's what you're, if they were able to add 13 more percent? Is that what you're saying?
No, sir, the lot is 100 feet long, and the relief granted in this case was 13% of the length of the lot. How is that a minor modification to the standards?
Well, the request to seek the administrative adjustment is allowed pursuant to rules that were administered through the city council. And, provided that they meet the requirements of those calculations and the other criteria of the administrative adjustment, then it is allowed to be awarded.
Ms. Moskov's package included a map of all rear setback properties within Bucktown, pages 163 to 164. Would you grant an administrative adjustment in every case if a developer, with or without a double lot, found that coming to the zoning board of appeals was an inconvenience?
I would not presume what an applicant in a different situation may do or may consider.
Thank you.
Brief closing.
Mr. Chairman, you've heard all the evidence. The zoning administrator rejected a mountain of evidence. He didn't bring in Ms. Moskov for a conversation. You've seen the voluminous materials that she has supplied. If the zoning administrator can grant an administrative adjustment in this case with this kind of opposition, then when will he ever reject an administrative adjustment? He'll just grant them and grant them, in which case, they might as well just make it permitted. You may as well not have a front setback ordinance calculation where you look at the adjacent properties. The zoning administrator said that he looked at the block. That isn't even part of the ordinance. They're only supposed to look at the adjacents. And, the zoning administrator seems to be saying that he just felt like coming here was an inconvenience that he could, that he could save. I think that's an insult to all of the people who have to be here for a variation today. Also, I would ask this board, if this board does not reverse this administrative adjustment with a package of 800 pages, with an application, with an applicant who spent nearly four years putting these materials together, and has assembled this crowd of neighbors, and all of these experts, in what case will you ever overturn the zoning administrator? And if you don't overturn the zoning administrator, what's the point of having these ordinances? What's the point of having these appeals? Thank you.
For the record, the board has overturned the zoning administrator on far less. All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you everyone for coming.
Okay, this is like, a lot.
Actually, I will run to the restroom.
You know what, let's, we're going to take a quick restroom break. All right, I'm going to move that we just take a short, five-minute recess. Commissioner Brooks, seconds. Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes, we're in recess for five minutes. No, you're good, you're good. I was like, Helen needs to be here for this one. This is going to be-
That's what I suggested.
I almost texted, I was going to make you-
I know, you were like, when you were in the bathroom- Sometimes go longer.
Okay, everybody ready? Okay, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Brooks, seconds. Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes, we're back, and we are calling our next case, which I have as 36324Z?
I believe so.
Brett and Wanda Evangelista? Excellent. Would both of you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much, and if you could just maybe pull that mic towards you and tell me, whoever wants to start, why you're here today.
We are seeking administrative relief for some violations on our, of the zoning code on our property. We have a garage that's a little too big, and a front addition that's also a little too big.
So, right, this, you're seeking to get some as-built construction into compliance, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, from reading your submission, it looks like you had a contractor, but that contractor did not obtain the right permit, is that true?
Yes.
Okay.
With the garage, I believe he pulled the right permit, but-
Okay. Is there other work that was done where you just didn't get any permit at all?
No.
No.
Okay.
Permits were pulled.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The permit was pulled on the garage. We did it in 2006, and the contractor pulled the permit, and it's in our contract. So when we called to get the permit from them to provide to you, they didn't have it in their file, and they had to pull it.
Okay, okay. So this construction was done back in 2006?
The garage was 2009, I believe.
Okay.
It was the garage.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay. There's, yeah, I remember from this one that there was multiple pieces here, right?
Right.
So you had the garage, what else did you have?
The front addition.
The front addition to our-
Okay. And, when was the front addition done?
It was actually on the house already when we bought it.
Oh, okay.
So it was there.
Couldn't find a permit for that one?
No.
Okay.
We did, sorry, we did modify it by putting the brick on- It was actually on the house already when we bought it.
Oh, okay.
So it was there.
And you couldn't find a permit for that one?
No.
Okay.
But we did, sorry, we did modify it by putting the brick on it, it was like a pink box.
Okay.
Put brick on it to make it more aesthetic pleasing.
Okay.
Thereby enlarging the space.
And that was done when?
That was two thousand and nine.
Yeah.
Two thousand and nine, okay. And was there a rear, some rear work as well?
No.
No, okay.
There's an addition on there that we want to replace, because it's falling apart.
That's what we're here for, it's coming off.
We can't proceed with that, with the violations.
I see, I see, okay. Okay, any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Who's gonna read? Who says? Fernando. They have an attorney?
This is where the park runs across the street.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. I will go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number three sixty-four twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to reestablish the non-accessory, non-required parking garage at five fifty West Jackson Boulevard in the basement and sub-basement of an existing office building with sixty parking spaces, provided the special use issued solely to the applicant, ABM Industry Groups LLC, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated July thirteen, two thousand and twenty-two, prepared by Camburas Theodore LTD. Counselor, this was a special use permit that we previously granted, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and basically you just didn't move forward within the year and the special use lapsed?
So the special use lapsed, yes, but it was simultaneously, the applicant had been working with the city to get a business license, and due to delays outside of the applicant's control, the license process kept getting pushed, and so by the time the special use from two thousand and twenty-two lapsed, they did not have that business license yet.
Okay. If you just want to have your witnesses swear to their affidavits and reports, and the board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise, and then we'll take it under advisement.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blaze Homtaru is here from the applicant. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Blaze Homtaru, it's my name, and at one eighty North Lasalle Street.
And in conjunction with our special use application in this hearing, we prepared an affidavit for your review and execution, is that correct?
Correct.
And if you were to testify further on this matter, would your testimony today be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you very much. No further questions for this witness. Mr. Ryan, you prepared an appraisal report for the subject property?
I did.
And if you were to testify further on this matter, would your testimony today be consistent with the conclusions provided in your report?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to recognize, Mr. Dan Luna is here from Alderman Conway's office, and it's our understanding that there is no objections to approval of the special use.
Excellent. Did you want to say anything, Mr. Luna?
Dan Luna, Chief of Staff for Alderman Conway, Thirty-Fourth Ward. The Alderman sent me here to support this applicant and their request, and would hope your positive consideration for this, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
your name and role, please?
Good morning.
It's my fault.
Fernando Espinoza, Department of Planning.
Hold up, wait, hold up one second. Oh, that's okay. All right, Fernando, your name and role, please.
Fernando Espinoza, City Planning and Department of Planning. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed nail salon. The department finds that the proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the nail salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed nail salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, who wants to start here?
He doesn't speak English well, but...
Okay.
I'll tell you his part, and whatever you don't understand, I'll just read it right.
Okay, could you maybe state your name and address, please?
My name is Devett Moore, sixty-one sixteen South Bishop Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six three six.
Okay, and sir, could you state your name and address, please?
Forty-six, forty, forty, and wet bitisun. Six oh six four six.
Okay, and are you, how do you say your name?
Ton Lee.
Ton Lee, okay. And you're here to open up a nail salon, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And how many employees do you intend on having?
Well, at the moment, there's only eleven.
Okay. And are they all licensed, what is it, estheticians?
Yes.
Okay. And what are the hours?
We are open from ten to seven. It's ten to seven, right? What time the store opens and closes shop?
Ten.
Can we close at seven?
Yeah.
Ten to seven, Monday through Friday.
Okay.
I mean, Monday through, well, seven days a week.
Seven days a week.
Right.
Okay. You're talking about, you're talking about it like it's open already, are you already operating in this space?
So, no, we are, we were in Unit A, we're moving over to C and B.
I see.
Unfortunately, the shop that's Unit A has been there for over, I could say, about fifteen years.
Okay.
The streets have adjusted, and we have new addresses now. Unfortunately, that's not in everything, so it's kind of a conflict. We have the union, and then we have Homestead Parkway, and that's where we're having an issue.
Okay, so you're just moving the business?
Yes, moving the business two doors over.
Okay, okay. Any questions from the board? We'll take this under advisement, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, I'll go ahead and read the board's recommendation for calendar number three sixty-six twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Ma'am, could you state your name for the record and your address, please?
Candace Masis. The proposed address is twenty-two fifty-two West North Avenue.
Okay, and you are here to open up a hair salon?
Correct.
Can you tell us about your experience in the hair salon business?
Sure, so I've been a hairdresser for twenty years. I currently operate a salon at twenty-eight twenty-five North Southport, and I have three employees currently, we've been there for three years, and I do a variety of techniques and service a lot of different people and demographics.
And do you have a, are you like a cosmetology license?
Correct.
Okay. And how long have you had that license?
I originally received my license in Oklahoma, and I transferred it to Illinois approximately six or seven years ago.
How many employees do you intend on having?
I intend on having five employees at this location and three to four independent contractors.
And what are the hours that you intend on keeping?
Seven days a week, ten AM to eight PM.
And, Mr. Wolin, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Mike Wolin, nineteen-ten First Street, Highland Park.
And you prepared a, first of all, the board recognizes your expertise.
I do.
You prepared a report in this matter, is that correct?
I did.
And if you were to testify, you'd testify consistent with that report?
It would be.
Okay. Any questions from the board? We'll take this under advisement, thank you.
Well, because they don't go into effect until November.
So. Right. Okay. We have talked, yeah.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Counselor Moore. I see we have an objector here, did you try to work it out?
Absolutely, we've, excuse me, yes, yes, we went in the hall and we talked about everything we could.
Okay, and not able to resolve it?
No.
Okay. All right, well then, please proceed.
Yes, thank you. My name for the record is Tom Moore, will you tell the board who you are?
Megan Grant, I live at eight-five-nine North Wood, Unit One.
And you have the bottom unit of a three-unit condominium, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And you bought that a year or two ago?
About three years.
And at that time, you had a lawyer, and you had an inspector, and you had a title company, and you did all your due diligence, and everyone told you everything was fine and right, is that right?
That's correct.
So you went ahead and closed, and you've been living there for three years with the gentleman to your right, and then you hired this architect to add a pergola, and you, in the permitting process, you found out for the first time that the bridge that goes from the exit stairs, the required exit stairs, to the garage roof deck was never properly permitted, is that right?
Yes, I found that out from Mike.
Yes. So then, in order to try to legitimize that, you had Mike, we got a denial, and we're in front of the board, and you're trying to be the good guy and make everything right, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
And to do other, now that you know about it, you can't sell the house, the building, because you, it's like one of those things you would have to check, like flooding basement, you know that something's not right, is that right?
Yeah, my understanding is it would make that much more difficult.
So you're here to try to make it right. Now, you're not the first buyer of this condo, is that right? You didn't buy it from the developer?
No, I believe I'm the third owner of this property.
Okay, and so this is a surprise and something you're just trying to fix, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and so you didn't cause it, and, but if the board were to grant this variance, then it would become, your understanding is then it would become legal and you could live happily ever after, is that right?
That's, that's the hope, yes.
Okay, so you and I worked out an affidavit, we addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with that, is that right?
I would, yes.
And the gentleman to her right, what is your name, sir?
Gideon Van Rieth.
And how do you fit into this?
Longtime partner, also, you know, and...
And you lived there as well, is that right?
Yes, I do, eight-five-nine.
And incidentally, you have both, you know the neighbor, and you've tried to be neighborly with her, is that right?
Yeah.
And, and we, we did talk in the hall, and her, she objects to the view of the back through, through your property and the back of the buildings and all the construction in the neighborhood.
Yes.
And there's nothing you can do about?
No.
Okay. Save tearing down the existing structure and building a new structure, which is one member of a condo you didn't even have control of, is that right?
No, we would have to get approvals from everyone else who lives in the building.
Okay, and it would cost substantial money.
Yes, I don't think we have an estimate, but I would expect that it would be extremely expensive.
Very well. And the gentleman at the end, will you tell us who you are?
Mike Ryan.
And you have fashion plans that would bring this property into compliance if the board grants the variance, is that right?
Correct.
And this, this condition predates the Hopkins Amendment, is that right?
The original permit plans of the building were from two thousand and thirteen, so yes.
Okay, and even if there was a Hopkins Amendment, at that time or any time, without a variance, you can't have a bridge, is that right?
That's correct.
But this board has, and people with this kind of situation, and on other occasions, has allowed people to bring it into compliance, since they didn't create the situation themselves, is that right?
Yes.
And in your experience, do the taking away of view, albeit of an alley or of the back of buildings, is, views a legitimate objection to a, a generally recognized objection to a variance?
No.
And you and I worked out a affidavit, a witness statement, where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance, is that right?
Yes, and I would like to state one last thing.
Yes.
And that is, the design and the improvements that are being proposed and installed on this property are all as of right. The only reason we're here is to rectify the non-compliant conditions that have existed since the original building over ten years ago.
That's our case in chief.
Okay, let's turn to the objector. Could you state your name and address, please?
Could you speak into the microphone?
My name is Michelle Kwan, and I live at eight-five-seven North Wood, I live in Unit Number One, it's a duplex down.
Okay, and tell us what your objection is.
Basically, I have lived there for over fifteen years. When I moved there, the building that they currently live in, the neighbors that are here today, did not exist. It was a two-story building with a very small garage in the back. I, now I'm sitting there with a building that's only two feet from the property line, we're built three feet, our building was built in nineteen ninety-eight. This building was not built, the time that got done was in two thousand and sixteen. Basically, at this point, I have less sunlight for the entire building, because now it's no longer a two-story, it's a four-story plus building with a roof deck on the top and also a pergola on the top. I have lost sunlight just due to their bridge that's going across. We have a regular three-car garage, so now they have a garage with the roof deck already there. So I've already lost a portion of my view just from what they've done with the new construction. Two doors over from me, there's also new construction, which has a four-story metal staircase, and they built 10 feet back, so it takes up all the southern light for me as well. And then on top of that, to the north of them, there's also brand-new construction, which is being built farther back than both of our buildings are, and they're going to put decks up. Like, I'm, I'm sitting here in a fishbowl, so not only am I losing sunlight, that causes resale value. I'm a realtor, I know that if you don't have sunlight, I'm not going to have what I need for resale purposes. So I'm getting squished, and I'm being told, oh, we'll just put a new garage on, it's $40,000. Well, I too still would need to go get, you know, information from the rest of the owners in my building as well. So the fact that that bridge is there, it's losing my sight. It all is, is causing a sunlight issue, a resale issue, not to mention all the wires. The reason they're putting this pergola up is so they don't have to see all the wires in between our two buildings at the, at the property line, and the wires that they have going aren't two stories high, so they're going across and they're scraping against their building.
The pergola, the wires, that's not before us. All, all that's before us is just the bridge, just, just that little staircase.
It's not a little staircase, it goes all the way across my view.
I, I, yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, but all I'm saying is that the bridge is all that we're talking about.
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm opposing the bridge. I, I think it's absolutely ridiculous it should have ever been built. The developer was horrible when he did it, so I, I think that they should fix what needs to be fixed instead of allowing for that bridge to stay.
Okay, all right. Did you have any questions for the, for the applicant's witnesses?
No, I'm not really sure how to do all this. I just know that I'm a longtime resident there, and I've just watched all this construction, and I'm getting stuck in a little fishbowl. So I, I, I'm here to voice my opinion and let the zoning board know that all these buildings that are coming up with not only a new garage, but then a rooftop deck, and then on top of that, the pergola, like, my view's gone. And it's just, it's, and I think that we need to be aware and conscious of what we're doing. I mean, I've lived in that neighborhood for almost 20 years, in my current place, 15. So it's just, at some point, enough's enough, and I've, I've already lost sunlight all around me, so I'm, I'm sticking my guns.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I do, very brief.
Go ahead.
Mr. Ryan, the sun goes across the southern sky, so does a building to the north of a building take away any significant light?
No.
It's taking away my tree view. I can't see the trees once that pergola is up. I'm, I'm losing my tree view. I've already lost half of it from the garage.
The pergola is not, is not before us.
Okay, and then, Megan, the objector lives on the first floor in the building to your south, and you have a letter of support from the people on the second floor in her building, is that right?
I do.
And this is a true and accurate copy of it, is that right?
That's right.
That's all we have.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Just to be clear, the, you need to do this because you want to do some repairs, and you want to build the pergola. And, but the other thing, the things that you want to do are by right, but in order to do them, you have to fix this first.
Right. Routinely, that, that.
I just, yeah, I got it.
Routinely, when, when we submit for anything, the zoning department looks at, what do you got?
No, no, I know this. I, I just wanted to make sure I understood the situation.
Yes.
Okay. With that, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 370, 24S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed nail salon. Would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise. Counselor, short form.
Yes. Good morning. I am Tom Pekarsky of the law firm at Gordon &amp; Pekarsky. Joining me today is Talga Batzuk, is the applicant and owner of the proposed nail salon, and Mr. Joseph Ryan, who's a professional real estate appraiser with LaSalle Appraisal. I have previously, let me call Mr. Batzuk first. Mr. Batzuk, I have previously, have I previously prepared a, an affidavit of your testimony and submitted it to the board?
Yes.
And if I were to ask you the, those questions, would your testimony be identical or similar to, substantially similar to the, to the answers that appear in your affidavit?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I would next like to call Mr. Ryan. Mr. Ryan, have I prepared a affidavit and, of your testimony, your proposed testimony for today, that we have submitted to the zoning board previously?
Yes.
And if I were to ask you the identical questions that appear in that affidavit, would your answers be identical or substantially similar to those that appear on the affidavit?
Identical.
Thank you. I have no further questions of this witness and no further witnesses.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you. My clients are approaching, so.
What's that?
My clients are approaching.
All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? You have to say yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we also have an interpreter, Mr. Leon, is an interpreter.
Oh, you're going to be an interpreter? Okay. What's the language you'll be interpreting? Spanish? Okay. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Leon, 2922 North Rockwell.
Okay. And do you swear or affirm to accurately and truthfully translate English to Spanish and Spanish to English?
I do.
Okay, excellent. Can she state her name for the record, please?
Sylvia Espinoza, 2922 North Rockwell.
Okay, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Translate that to her.
And everyone, please speak into the microphone.
All right, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you. Again, I am Tom Pekarsky of the law firm at Gordon &amp; Pekarsky, representing the applicant, Sylvia Espinoza. Joining me today is Sylvia Espinoza, who's the applicant of the existing two-flat at 2922 North Rockwell Street. Carlos Leon, who is Ms. Espinoza's partner and will be acting as interpreter in this matter, and Victor Drobsow, who's the project architect with Red Architects. I would first like to call Ms. Espinoza in this matter, and Mr. Leon, if you could interpret my questions. Ms. Espinoza, have I prepared and have you signed and have I submitted for you an affidavit detailing your proposed testimony in today's hearing? Okay. Just, okay. And if, if I were to ask you the same questions, would your testimony today be identical or substantially similar to the responses that appear on that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. I have no further questions of this witness, and I would next like to call Mr. Victor Drobsow. Mr. Drobsow, please state your name, occupation, and business address for the record.
Victor Drobsow, licensed architect, 2123 North Damon.
And have I previously prepared a, an affidavit detailing your proposed testimony for today?
Yes.
And that has been submitted to the, to the board?
Correct.
If I were to ask you the, the same questions that appear on that affidavit, would your testimony be identical or substantially similar to the answers that appear on that, on that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. I have no further questions of this witness and no further witnesses.
Any questions from the board?
None.
We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you, and good day.
Would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor Moore, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you very much. My name for the record is Tom Moore. Will you tell the board who you are?
Kaylee Lander.
And where do you live?
2024 West Erie.
And who do you live there with?
My husband, John, and our one-year-old daughter, Hazel.
Very well, and you have some space on your third floor that you'd like to be able to use and have a playroom, is that right?
Yes.
And, but there is a jury-rigged kind of, it's not quite an elevator, it's, it's something to get there that's not, may not be code, code compliant, and it certainly would not be safe for a child, is that right?
Yes, the staircase to that space.
And so we're here today asking the board to grant a variance for internal work to add a staircase to your third floor, is that right?
The staircase already exists there.
Okay.
Counselor, I, I think you might be confusing your cases.
I'm very sorry.
Yeah, because I, I was thinking the same thing. I remember, I know the case you're talking about. It's not this one.
Yes, I'm very sorry. Excuse me. You have a, you have a garage roof deck that was built but never, never been finalized or made usable, is that right?
Yes, we have a rooftop space on our garage space with a staircase attached that is, does not match the plans.
And so we're here today to bring it into compliance, and your understanding with the architect is if the board grants this variance, everything will then be code compliant, is that right?
Yes.
And you and I worked out an affidavit whereby you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
And the gentleman to your right, will you tell us who you are?
John Lambeth.
And you're actually from England, and you are afraid of your accents, so you wanted your wife to do all the talking, is that right?
Yes, sometimes people get confused by my accent, so I let my great-wife to take, take the speaking role today. I'm glad you brought that up.
But you, but you did work out a witness statement similar to hers, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right? Thank you. And the gentleman to her right, to his right, will you tell us who you are?
Mike Ryan, from Scott.
Beck &amp; Garden.
And at the applicant's request, you drew plans that would bring their existing roof deck into compliance, is that right?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with your witness statement, is that right?
That's correct, and this is another project where our improvements are code compliant, and we're, we're bringing the existing conditions into compliance.
Very well. I'm sorry for my confusion. That is our case in chief.
Okay. With regard to the, to the garage roof deck, was this already built when you purchased the property?
Yes, it was.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that.
Right.
I remembered that case, but I was like, this is.
Been there, done it.
You'll meet them, sir. Another couple with a baby.
Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Moore, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you. My name for the record is Tom Moore. Will you tell the board who you are?
James. James.
We'll let Tanya go first, okay?
Good morning, I'm Tanya Trice.
And Ms. Trice, you and your husband have a restaurant or a food place that thus far has been pickup-only, is that right?
That's correct.
And you actually are active in the Chicago, in the local business community, is that right?
That's correct. I'm the executive director of the South Shore Chamber of Commerce, the community where the restaurant is located.
And one of the things in your neighborhood is there are very few sit-down restaurants and even fewer outdoor cafes, is that right?
That is correct. There are no dine-in restaurants on the 71st Street District where our restaurant is located.
And so you have now rented the store next door to your existing pickup restaurant, and you're going to hopefully have a sit-down restaurant, you're going to expand in and have a sit-down restaurant?
That's correct, and actually, we are planning to purchase that property and expand our business into a dine-in restaurant and outdoor patio.
Okay. And the, conveniently, there is a nice, there's a cul-de-sac on the other side of it, and there's a nice open space that would be perfect for the outdoor.
That's correct.
Facility. However, across the alley, and we have pictures of that, that show that, is that right?
Yes.
And across the alley is a residential district, so we need a variance to be able to use that area as an outdoor cafe, even though it's near a residential district, is that right?
That's correct.
And so we're here today asking for a variance to allow the use of that outdoor space, is that right?
That's correct.
And you have a letter of support from the local South Shore Chamber of Commerce, is it?
From our chairman.
Okay. And you also have a letter of support from Alderman Desmond Yancy, is that right? And you and I worked out a witness statement where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance, is that right?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
That's correct.
The gentleman to your right, will you tell us who you are?
My name, my name is James Trice. I'm the husband of Tanya Trice.
You're, you're the guy who does the work. She's the brains and you're the work, is that fair? I'm sorry. Anyway, you heard what Ms. Trice said, and is there anything you could add to that?
Yes, I've been a building owner in the community for the last 30 years, multi-unit buildings, owned about 347 units in the community, and I've, I've been, I've been a resident of South Shore for more than 30 years. And we have a, a stake in the community, and we're trying to move the community in another direction. So part of doing this has been to try to add a dine-in restaurant to the community, start helping to move the, the community in another direction. So part of doing this has been to try to add a dine-in restaurant to the community, start helping to move the community in another direction.
And along those lines, you're certainly going to be respectful of those residential people across the alley.
Absolutely.
Great. And the gentleman to your right, will you tell us who you are, sir?
James Trice Jr.
And how do you relate to this case?
I'm a manager of the restaurant and.
You're just here in support.
No, I'm not just here to support. I mean, it's kind of important to me too. I just.
Okay. And that's our case in chief.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
What are the hours of operation?
Hours of operation of Sunday through, Sunday through Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And on Saturday from 11:00 to 11:00.
That'd be Friday too?
Friday too, yes. Friday and Saturday from 11:00 to 11:00, I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now it's some barbecue.
All right, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Musawir's expertise. Counselor, you can proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman, or morning rather. I'm here today on behalf of the property owner, John Trice. We are here, Judge, seeking a variation to reduce the combined side yard setback from the required five feet, the 4.6, the west to be 1.9, east to be 2.7, for the division of an improved zoning lot.
And I mean, basically what you're doing is you're just dividing the lots, you got a building on one of the lots and then the other one is not buildable right now, but that's why you want to divide it?
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
That's exactly why.
Do you want to have your witnesses swear to their affidavits and reports and then we'll see if there's any questions?
Of course. I will first ask of Mr. Trice. John, you recall we went ahead and prepared a witness statement for today, is that correct? And you signed that statement as well? And your testimony that you're about to give today would be substantially the same as was contained in that statement, is it correct? Okay. And for Mr. Musawir? Afternoon, good morning. So you recall we did prepare a statement for you as well? Is that correct? You signed that statement?
Yes, I did.
And any testimony you will be giving today will be substantially the same as was contained therein?
Yes, it would.
Yep. Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you all very much.
All right, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rolando Acosta here on behalf of the applicant. This matter involves a single-family home in the Saginaw neighborhood. It has an existing house. To the rear of the house is, the neighborhood is on the National Register of Historic Places. The house is a contributing structure to that district. The house is also orange-rated on the Chicago survey of significant places. The rear of the house has currently a one-story addition. The applicants wish to live there with their family, the husband, wife, two children. They would like to demolish the existing addition, which currently encroaches into the rear yard, and replace it with a two-story addition that is roughly of the same depth as the one-story addition, but does expand across the entire back of the house. It also is two stories versus one stories, but those are the main differences here. Because the house has a significant front yard setback, the existing rear addition is in the rear yard setback already. It's a non-conforming structure to be removed. The new, you can see it in this photo, the new addition in the rear also is requiring the current request for a reduction in the rear yard setback to accommodate it. Because of the location of the house, very far setback on the property, and also the fact that it's a historic structure, so additions to these, at least ideally, would not be visible from the street. The only place to place an addition here is in the rear. Those two factors have combined to create the hardship, which has led us to the request for this variation. We have spoken to all the neighbors and more precisely the two immediate neighbors who have no objections to this. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have the witnesses validate their affidavits.
Please do.
Thank you. Sarah, please state your name and address for the record.
Sarah Lane, 6126 North Kirkwood, 60646.
And I prepared an affidavit that you reviewed and executed summarizing your testimony, is that correct?
Yes.
And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit? Thank you. Rico, please state your name and address for the record.
Ricardo Ramos, 6224 North Avers, Chicago, Illinois, 60659.
And you're the architect for the project?
Yes.
And I similarly prepared an affidavit that summarizes your testimony, what would be your testimony before this board, and you reviewed it and executed it as accurate, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be substantially similar to that statement in that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, any questions from the board? We'd be happy to answer.
Any questions from the board?
Did you, am I correct that this is a historic, is it an historic district or is it a landmark building?
So, no, it's a historic district. The house itself is not individually landmarked. It's in a district, it's a contributing, it's a 1930 structure, it's a contributing structure to the district.
So they don't need approval for what they're doing from the landmarks?
That is correct. It's also a federal, this is at the federal level. It's only orange-rated at the city. It's not actually city landmark or district. And because they're not demolishing the house, they don't need landmark approval. We've also placed it in the rear, so even if we did, they'd approve it because you can't see it from the front.
So they don't need any further additional approval from any other body?
That's correct. They were almost complete with their building permits when this was noted and stopped everything. Thank you.
All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Hemanic Castro. I'm a zoning attorney at Acosta Asger. With me today is the manager of the applicant, Jordan Christensen, and his architect, Kat Marko-Ramick. Can you please state your business address and name for the record, Jordan?
Jordan Christensen, 3825 North Desert Oasis Circle, Mesa, Arizona.
And Ms. Ramick, can you please state your name and a business address for the record?
Kat Marko-Ramick, Building Projects, 4468 North Elston, Chicago, Illinois, 60630.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the property in question today is 1502 North Hudson. Very briefly, the property is zoned RM5. It is an ETOD location to the Sedwick brown and purple lines. It is a substandard lot of 123.68 feet in depth. It is improved with a three-story residential building with a two-car detached garage. The building is, it includes three dwelling units and it actually has a district height of 45 feet maximum in an RM5 and we're just under that at like 44 feet. The applicant is proposing to add three dwelling units to the property for a total of six. The district actually allows a total of seven units on the property, but the applicant is only opting to add six. We're also proposing to demolish the garage to include three parking spaces as opposed to the two that are existing. We will be providing six bicycle spaces and also a roof deck space with 300 square feet. To accommodate the three-story, the three dwelling units, we are proposing a three-story rear addition. And just for the record, the existing building has a north side setback of zero and a south side setback of 3.07 feet. We are asking for three variations today to make the addition and the density of the three dwelling units to be accommodated in the property. The first variation is to reduce the north side combined and rear setbacks. The hardship there is the existing conditions and we're following the lines of the building. In addition, the height of the building, we're right under the maximum allowed, so we cannot build another floor and the three-story seems to be within the character of the block, so we want to make sure that we respect that. The second variation is to reduce the rear yard open space from 216 square feet to zero. This is to accommodate the three parking spaces that we are providing, which the alderman was very happy to hear about. And the existing hardships there are the existing conditions, the fact that we would like to keep the two existing parking spaces and provide a third one. And also because the existing height again, if we were to add a fourth floor to make space for rear yard open space, that would not be allowed within the current zoning district. The third variation is to reduce parking from two to zero. This is an ETOD location and because we are providing three additional parking spaces, we would need three spaces and we are providing one, again for a total of three, so we would be reducing to two parking spaces. We have spoken at length with the north and south neighbors. I believe the board has a letter of no objection from the northern neighbor. We do have favorable recommendations, no objections from the southern neighbors as well, from the president of the HOA. We have reached out to the neighbors across the alley as well. No objection, no comment, and obviously we have met with the alderman and his staff and they issued a letter of no objection this morning, which we have forwarded to the board.
Great. If you want to have your witnesses swear to their affidavits and then we'll see if there's any questions.
Thank you very much. Brian, we submitted documents on your behalf, including an affidavit to the board. If you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the materials the board has before them today?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Ms. Ramick, we submitted plans and affidavits to the board, including, just for the record, as of September 16th, we submitted to Project Docs, the architect did, an updated drawing showing a slight height change in the basement. It has no bearing on the proposed height for the roof of the building, but just wanted to know that that is uploaded to Project Docs and Mr. Raza has a copy of that as well, so just wanted to clarify that for the record. Ms. Ramick, if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the materials provided to the board?
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Scott Borstein from the law offices of Neil and Leroy here on behalf of the Philip Randolph Pullman Porter Museum. I'm joined today by Dr. Lynn Hughes, the CEO of the museum, as well as Abiola Segbowen, or she also goes by Armel. He's our project architect. So this case involves the museum, which has been located at 10406 South Maryland for almost 30 years. And I don't know if you are familiar with the museum at all, but its, you know, main mission is telling the story of African-American labor and the US labor force. It's been an anchor in the Pullman community, you know, for this entire time. And through the efforts of Dr. Hughes, the museum has been able to acquire the adjacent property, which is 10408 South Maryland. And she has also raised significant grant funding in order to not only acquire that property, but to add an addition, which is for an elevator principally at the rear of the structure. The elevator addition, of course, will provide ADA access and the expansion plus the elevator will allow Dr. Hughes to modernize the museum and also add critical space for exhibits. As you've seen in our application, we're seeking rear and side yard reductions and we are also seeking a small increase in floor area ratio. Again, in the application materials, you know that these are long-existing structures. They are on substandard lots and they are contributing structures, right, in the Pullman Historic District. So there's a lot of factors at play here that are necessitating the variations that we're seeking today. So the community is strongly in support of the project. We've sent you a bunch of letters to that effect, including Preservation Chicago. They were here, by the way, I think they submitted a form, but they had to leave because they're, the hearing ran too long. They were going to testify.
It happens every now and again.
Yes, yes, right. And there's others that are here too that are going to indicate their support. The alderman also is in support. I did get a letter from him, but it came too late, so I'll send it to the board just for your records. But with that, unless there's any other questions or comments, I would call our witnesses and do our short form.
Please do.
Okay, great. Dr. Hughes, can you state your name and address for the record?
I'm Dr. Lynn Hughes. My home address or the building address?
Your business address.
10406 South Maryland Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
And Dr. Hughes, you're familiar with the findings of fact and the affidavit that was prepared in connection with this application, setting forth how the museum satisfies various, the various standards for the variations we are seeking. And if I were to ask you to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the conclusions and findings in the affidavit?
Absolutely.
Very good. Armel, can you state your name and address for the record?
Abiola Sagwahan, 4259 North Ashland, 60613.
Did you hear that? Okay, great. And Abiola, if I were to, or you're familiar with the affidavit and the findings of fact and the materials that we've submitted in connection with this project. And if I were to ask for you to testify further today, would your testimony be consistent with those affidavits and materials?
Yes.
We have nothing else unless the board does.
Okay. And I see we've got a couple other people here. Did you want to speak on this matter, sir?
Absolutely.
Could you state your name?
Thank you. Good morning. David Peterson, President and Executive Director of the National Philip Randolph Pullman Porter Museum, address 10406 South Maryland Avenue.
Thank you very much. And tell us, I assume you're in support?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And go ahead and express it.
I'm here following the ranks of my dear, our dear founder, the matriarch of the Pullman Porter Dynasty, if you will. Just to, on record, say that we are an epicenter for black labor history. We're currently on the verge of creating the world's first and only black labor tourism district. We're a beacon of light for the community and we have been so for the last 30 years as the museum, 35 as community development. So with your support and the consistent support that we've been receiving, we're excited to be able to continue this project.
Excellent, thank you. And ma'am, could you state your name and address, please?
Tiffany Johnson-Massick, 10418 South Maryland Avenue, Chicago, 60628.
Okay, and are you also here in support?
Yes.
All right, go ahead and say what you wanted to say.
I just wanted to express my support in the rezoning of the Philip A. Randolph Pullman Porter Museum. I live on the same row in the Pullman home of the museum. And I will support anything that would allow growth and opportunities to the legacy of, and the vision of this museum. And I also wrote a letter in support of this matter. And it is not only a historical district and in the Pullman National Park District. It's also the first national, the first African-American labor history museum, one of its kind in the nation. And I just really want to thank. Um, and I just really want to thank you for taking the time out to hear, um, my opinion on this matter.
Yeah, well, that, well, thank you for coming. Uh, are there any questions from the board?
Uh, I, I want to actually congratulate you also on the, uh, historic designation or, we actually made part of a public park, federal park? It's a federal designation, right?
We're, we're part of the Pullman National Historical Park, boundaries 103rd to 115th, the IC to the, to the Bishop Ford Expressway, and we are on the northern boundary of the National Historical Park.
Right.
Which, which helps us along the way.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and so, we're waiting.
So, so, so my question actually in relationship to that is, are there other, um, are there other, uh, are there other approvals that you need that are related to the landmark status of the area or specifically to the museum? And have-
I mean, we, we, we have, of course, had to go through several landmark reviews, uh, and approvals, right, not only from, uh, the city, but also-
City, state, and federal.
So you've already done that?
Yes, and we're, we're, I, I'm sure, I want to make sure I understand the question. Do we have more zoning issues that come, that are-
You're, you're just asking about the landmark.
I'm actually raising this because consistently in my experience in the city, that, um, often there's, I mean, it's really why a lot of people end up here, uh, regulations or things that ha, things that have to be gone through, uh, that you find out along the way and then have to keep doing it. So I'm wondering if you've been through all that and you're good to go once we make a decision here.
Yes, we are.
Excellent. Uh, any other questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you. All right. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Musawir's expertise. I will go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 38224S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a proposed 22-room transitional shelter, serving women and their children, minors up to the age of 15, provided one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Catholic Charities of the Archdiocese of Chicago. Two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated September 9, 2024, prepared by Red Architects. Three, the facility is exclusively utilized as a transitional shelter. And four, there are no more than 22 adult female clients with their children, minors up to the age of 15, residing on site at any time. Counselor, you have no objectors and you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you very much. Um, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Steve Friedland with the Law Firm of Applegate, and Thorn Thompson, here on behalf of Catholic Charities of the Archdiocese of Chicago. My two witnesses, um, to my right is Laura Hoover, who's a Vice President with Catholic Charities, and our expert witness, Kareem Musawar, who, um, thank you for recognizing his expertise. Just a quick background on the two requests that we have. The first is, um, to adapt and reuse this existing building, which formerly, for about the past 20 years, operated as affordable senior housing, 22 units, that was operated by Catholic charities. And before then, it was a convent. Um, the, um, senior use was no longer, um, uh, had funding sources for it. So, um, fortunately, what Catholic Charities is able to do is to bring in a program for, um, people who have suffered from domestic violence, women and their children. Um, and that's the proposal for the special use. In addition, when we went through our process with the city, as you know, we have to ask for a parking determination letter, and we received one suggesting that we would need nine parking spaces and one additional space if we had a, um, van at the property, which has not been determined. We're requesting a variation to go down to zero. There is no parking at this property currently. Um, the interesting thing is that when this was operated as a senior housing, uh, development, which was done in the early 2000s, the transit serve location provisions of the organs didn't exist. And, um, uh, Catholic Charities has a long-term lease with the parish, which is directly behind the building, for eight parking spaces. That lease still exists today. It was granted as a special use for the, um, elderly development. Um, Catholic Charities tends to keep that lease in place. Um, in, in addition, now that we have the transit serve location reductions, um, you know, we note that this property is less than 1,000 feet from two transit serve bus lines on Armitage and Pulaski. There's a divvy bike station a couple of blocks away. We're going to put 12 bike parking spaces on the site. So what we'd like to do is request the variation for all of the parking with the understanding that we will still have access to some parking spaces, eight parking spaces in the adjacent church. With that, uh, let me start with Laura. Laura, please state your name and address for the record.
Laura Hoover. My business address is 721 North LaSalle, Chicago 60654.
And in connection with the filing of our application, we worked together on an affidavit that stated certain aspects of the proposed program and your qualifications, the qualifications of your staff. If you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. And now, uh, Mr. Musawar, um, you prepared a report, uh, for us on behalf of this project. Um, if you were to proceed to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the findings and determinations made in your report?
Yes, they would.
Thank you. And I, I know that we have a representative from Alderman Fuente, uh, Alder Fuentes's office. She did, uh, provide us with a letter of support, but that's our case. We're happy to take any questions.
Absolutely. Um, uh, would you, uh, like to speak on behalf of this matter for, uh, for Alder Person Fuentes?
Yeah, um, Marie Snyder, Legislative aide for Alder Person Fuentes. She offers her full support for this. Um, it did go through a community process, as all of projects do, and, um, if anyone has any concern, she is willing to meet with them and Catholic Charities has also offered to, uh, be collaborative in any meetings moving forward. So, uh, she offers her full support.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, any questions from the board? All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you. If everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed.
Good morning, Board. Attorney Robert Martinez appearing on behalf of the applicant. Please state your name and address for the record.
Um, my name is Manuel Martinez, 5423 South Landale, Chicago, Illinois, 60632-3240.
Are you the applicant owner of the subject property and do you reside there?
Yes.
How long have you lived there for?
Since 2009.
And you're here today to ask for a variation, correct?
Yes.
And, um, this variation is regarding a, uh, gate that is built too close to, uh, your property line? Was that gate existing when you purchased the property?
No.
Um, where did, was there a gate when you purchased the property?
Uh, uh, no. I pulled a permit to, uh, to do the, the, and I didn't know that I was supposed to build it on the front.
And when you built this gate, um, is there a reason why you built it, eh, within your property, but still, uh, not following the setback requirements?
Uh, it's because the stairs, they're there and I cannot build it, the rolling gate, uh, close by, but I was not aware.
So you're, you're saying that, uh, the reason why you had to build, uh, the gate in the position that you did after obtaining the, the permit is because the front entry to your home, uh, would not, uh, be able to accommodate for those stairs, which are necessary for you to enter, uh, the single-family home?
Yes.
And, um, today, uh, you're here before the board, uh, for an application of a variation to reduce the required front setback from 5.67, uh, feet to zero feet in order to allow for the as-built six-foot-tall OPEC fence and rolling gate with an existing two-story single-family residence? And it's true that my office prepared an affidavit, uh, regarding these circumstances as well as a finding of facts, uh, on your behalf, and, um, you answered all of those questions truthfully, correct?
Yes.
And if I were to ask you those questions, uh, to, again, today, would your answers be the same or substantively similar? Um, any questions from the board?
Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark Kupiec. I'm the attorney for the applicant. And I have with me today Kyle Gianoni, seated next to me. Next to him, Emily Hill. Um, Kyle and Emily are the applicants and also the owners of the subject property. Next to Emily is Peter Enderly, who's the project architect. And we're here today on a variation for the subject property. A property already improved with an old three-story building. We're here for the variation on a floor area issue, uh, because, uh, the, uh, the building exceeds allowable floor area by 139 square feet. And history is, this is an old building built maybe back in 1886, in need of repairs, as you can imagine. Uh, Kyle and Emily bought the building in 2019, and when they bought the building, it had a rear porch and there were two portions of the rear porch that were enclosed. And they were enclosed before they bought the property. It looked like some old, actually some old enclosures. More recently, they applied for a building permit to make other repairs in the property. And the zoning examiner saw from the plans that the two portions of the rear porch were enclosed. He checked, could not find any permit history for these enclosures, so he calculated the total floor area and counting the floor area with these enclosures, they exceed the allowable floor area. Uh, as you well know, Board-
It's a longstanding, existing condition that you're seeking to bring into compliance.
Exactly. And you've got to, uh, the power to grant 15%. Actually, this 139 feet, by my calculation, is .045% uh, over the allowable limit.
Getting greedy.
So with that, uh, my first witness would be Kyle. Kyle, would you state your name?
Kyle Gianoni.
Good. And Kyle, you're one of the, uh, co-owners of the property?
Yes, sir.
And also one of the applicants?
Yes, sir.
And you bought that building about when?
Uh, July 2019.
And Kyle, when you bought that building, were these two portions of the rear porch enclosed at that time?
Yes, sir.
And did they look old?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Kyle, uh, did we prepare an affidavit for you in connection with this case today?
Yes, we did.
If I continue to quiz you, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have. Kyle, Emily, would you state your name and address in that microphone?
Emily Hill, 1629 West Foster.
Emily, are you also a co-owner of the subject property?
Yes.
Emily, also correct that when you bought the subject property, these two portions of the rear porch were already enclosed?
Yes.
And they looked old? And you signed an affidavit in connection with your testimony here today?
Yes.
And if I continue to quiz you, your answers would be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. Peter, name and address?
Sir, Peter Erdely, 5830 North Kingsdale Avenue, Chicago.
Peter, and you are the project architect?
Yes, I am.
Peter, uh, did you have a guess or an estimate, uh, about how old these two porch enclosures might be?
I think they're at least 50 years old. Some of the hardware on the third-floor addition is no longer being made.
Good. And Peter, you had signed an affidavit in connection with your testimony here today?
That's correct.
If I were to continue to question you, your answers would be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, they would.
Most of those questions?
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Let me go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 38624S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed gas station with a convenience store, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant. 2410 Prop Limited and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the proposed site plan, landscape plan dated September 9, 2024, and preliminary interior floor plan and elevations dated August 27, 2024, all prepared by WMK20 LLC. Counselor, you have no objectors that I can see, so, uh, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you. Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the, of the commission. Um, my name is Tim Barton, Timothy Barton, um, of the Law Office of Thomas R. Raines, Attorney at Law, and I'm here representing 2410 Prop Limited, the applicant in this, uh, special use matter. Um, the applicant, the applicant is proposing to improve a vacant approximately 30,000-square-foot parcel on the, uh, northwest corner of 95th Street and Woodlawn Avenue. Uh, the site is a little unusual because just to the north of it, um, the site backs up onto a railroad freight yard, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, with that, um, I'll, uh, ask the applicants to swear to their affidavits. To my right is Ahmad Bosun, who is the, was the applicant. He's the manager for the, uh, for the 2410 Prop Limited. Let me ask you, um, Ahmed, um, you've signed an affidavit in this, um, in this case?
Yes.
If you were to testify further, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, they would.
Okay. Um, I'd also like, uh, Toby Soren to recognize Toby Sorenson.
Oh, yes, uh, the board recognizes Mr. Sorenson's expertise.
Thank you. Um, Toby, you're a certified, uh, planning or real estate appraiser?
Correct.
And you- And you submitted a report with regard to this property and examining both the site conditions and the criteria for special use, did you not?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And if you were to testify further today, would your answers be consistent with the, with that report?
Yes, they would.
Okay. I understand there are a couple of additional people who want to make statements, or is that true, Ahmed?
Yes. Sure. Yes, we have Safana right here and a couple more.
Good morning. My name is Safana Calderon. I am actually a resident in that area that is in the 4th District, 8th Ward. I've lived there possibly 23 years. Did have a chance to meet with Mr. Ahmed regarding the property and our concerns regarding the property and possible crimes that could happen or things that have been happening. And also being the B facilitator for the 4th District in that area, concerns about, as I mentioned, the railroad property. I know that he's adding cameras 360 around the entire property that will connect directly with the police department. He also addressed our concerns regarding traffic in that area and employment of people from the neighborhood along with vendors.
Excellent. Would you like to speak as well?
Well, I just wanted to say that-
Could you state your name for the record, please?
First, good morning, everyone. My name is Carolyn Jones. I live at 9361 Greenwood, and I have been in that, in this community for 35 years. And my daughter has grown up there. Now my grandkids is growing up there. And as Safana just said, that these are the concerns that we have had. And he seems to be committed to, you know, to address all our concern.
Excellent, excellent. Would you like to speak as well? Okay. All right. Any questions from the board?
Just one other thing, I think in your packet is a support letter from the Alderman.
We do have that, yes.
I think it was useful because she, in fact, little knew you with two of Mr. Mosun's existing gas stations. And so based on that, she based her approval based on that.
Understood. Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you. All right. Would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise. I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 38724S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed Body Art Service Tattoo Facility, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Good Look Studios LLC. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Chairman. For the record, my name is Fred Augustine with the Law Office of San Banks located at 221 Northwest South Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Good Look Studios LLC. Applicant is leasing space at 806 West Armitage. We are seeking special use in order to permit, to permit a body art service facility. Two witnesses testifying with me on behalf of the applicant, Justin Pat and our appraiser, Joe Ryan. First witness, Mr. Pat, please state your name and address for the record.
Justin Pat. Personal address is 3848 North Damon Avenue.
And you are the managing member of the applicant, Good Look Studios LLC, is that correct?
Correct.
And you are seeking to establish essentially a body art service facility at the property, is that right?
Yes.
Studio will be open three days a week, Thursdays through Saturdays, by appointment only, is that correct?
Correct.
You executed an affidavit which we submitted to the board on your behalf, is that right?
Yes.
And if we continued, your testimony would be consistent with that affidavit, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan, please state your name and address for the record.
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI, President LaSalle Appraisal Group with offices at 9455 South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And just quickly, in your opinion, the proposed Body Art Service Facility meets all the approval criteria for special use as set forth in Chicago's ordinance?
Yes.
You prepared a written report with your findings, is that correct?
I did.
And if you, your testimony continued, your testimony, you testify consistent with your report, is that correct?
I would, yes.
Thank you, Chairman. I have no further questions.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you again, Chairman, for the record, Fred Augustine. I'm, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Benjamin Porcaholy. Applicant owns the property at 1559 North Wells Street. He operates his business, which is Galleria Liquors, which is a wine shop, which has been around for many years. The applicant would like to redevelop the property with a new five-story mixed-use building containing commercial space at grade, eight units above, and one off-street parking spaces. In order to do that project, we are seeking variations to the rear setback, off-street parking, as well as increasing the height. And just Chairman, before I briefly get to our witnesses, hardship here, short lot, only 112 feet deep. Had it been a standard city lot, I believe the project would have been different, and we would have complied with all those requirements. Also, we have worked with Alderman Hopkins and his office on this matter. We also worked with the local community group, which is the Old Town Merchants Residence Association. They're in support so long as we work with the adjacent neighbor to the north, as well as with the group when it comes time to demolition. Obviously, he was concerned about his foundation, his building be affected when demolitions comes about. So when we get to that point, the applicant will hire a structural engineer, will vet it with the neighbor, will vet it with the group, and we'll work with them on that process just to ensure his building will be fine during this proceeding. So with that, just want to get that on the record. First witness, Mr. Porcaholy, please state your name and address for the record.
Benjamin Porcaholy. I live at 1422 North, North Park Avenue, Chicago 60610.
And you own the property at 1559 North Wells Street, is that right?
Yes.
And your plan is to redevelop it with a new five-story mixed-use building, is that correct?
Yes.
And in order to do that project, we are seeking variations to the height, rear setback, and parking, is that correct?
Yes.
You executed an affidavit which we submitted to the board on your behalf, is that right?
Yes.
And if we continued, your testimony would be consistent with that affidavit, is that correct? Thank you. Next witness. Tom, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Thomas Economo, 321 South Jefferson Street, Chicago, Illinois 60661.
And you are the architect for this project, is that right?
That's correct.
And just to be clear, just, we have a unique property. It's only 112 feet deep. That posed a hardship in terms of complying with the rear setback, providing the off-street parking, as well as the height, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's why we're seeking these variations, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
You executed an affidavit which we submitted to the board on your behalf?
Yes, I did.
And if you, your testified, if you continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you, Chairman. I have no further questions for our witnesses. We're here to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions from the board?
So you're in existing business now?
Yes.
And you own the building, and you're going to make these additions, that's your hope?
Yes.
Currently, is it, I, I think I wanted to focus or just ask you some questions about the parking because it seems to me that's kind of a difficult parking area, but you already have a business, so you have, you have experience here. When your customers come, if they're not walking, where does, is, is there parking on the street that's actually available pretty much? Or is, I mean, I think it's a Thai area, that's why I meant-
Yes, yes. It's lots of parking is available because there's a lot of business around that area. Whoever comes in, they're only going to stay there for like half an hour, two shops around and just leave. And also across the street is lots of, couple of parking lots. And on the Piper's Alley is also a lot of parking lots. So I don't think there's any problem with the parking. And plus whoever moves around that area is a younger crowd. They've walked downtown area. I mean, they really don't need any cars and all. And plus, said vehicle stations around the corner from me, one hour, I mean, half a block, one block. And also LaSalle Street and Clark, all the buses going through downtown and going all the way to North Side. So parking is not a really problem at all.
And traffic?
Traffic is, no, I mean, just in and out again, as usual. It's not, not big, really big deal.
Okay. Do you have any issues with double parking or anything like that currently?
No, not at all.
All right, thanks.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
No.
We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, sir. Let me be the first one to say good afternoon to you. My name is Agnes, is it?
Hold up, hold up. It's 11:59. Come on.
Let's wait, let's wait for a minute.
No, let's not.
My name is Agnes Plaka. I'm an attorney with Jaffe in Berlin. And I represent Kevin Coonan and Andrea Hartley, the owners of this property and the applicants in this application. Very simply, this looks like we are asking for a lot of relief, but just to kind of simplify the case, we have this beautiful, charming, as you can see, cottage looking too flat, which they are proposing to preserve, maintain, and just update. So the variations basically are, are needed to preserve the status quo. We have an old porch in the rear which they are replacing with a new addition. So hence, all these variations. Another hardship is that the basement that you can see is actually slightly above the grade and below. So even though the building kind of looks small, but all that basement area is included in the maximum FAR, again, adding to the hardship for the site plan. And with that, Kevin, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Kevin Coonan, 2329 West Charleston Street.
And is it true that you're proposing to preserve and rehab your beautiful building?
Yes.
And you need this to accommodate your family's needs?
That's right.
So your hardship is not just created by the short substandard lot, which is only 100 by 24, but also by the higher basement and the existing non-conforming setbacks, is that true?
That is true, yes.
And the purpose of these variations are not based on, on your desire to make more money out of the property? You just need it to accommodate your family?
That's right. We, we, we originally bought it as a, with a rental unit. We stopped renting, we rented it for, for eight years. We stopped renting. And we'd like to, we'd like to convert it into a single family. We've lived there for 12 years. It, it is really, should be a single-family house if you look at it. So we're excited to be able to combine floors for our family. Our kids go to the school nearby. And we'd love to stay in the neighborhood and, and improve, improve our house.
And you also discussed this project with your neighbors, and you actually collected three letters from your adjacent, is that true?
That's right. My, my, each neighbor on both sides, we have good relationships with, and they're in support of the project. We walked through the plans with them. And our rear, one of our rear alley neighbors, the one directly behind us is brand new, just moved in. We don't have a letter from them, but we've let them know about the project as well.
So this is the only exhibit, Mr. Chairman, that we didn't submit before, so I would love to include it.
Okay.
So as such, this project will not be injurious to the neighboring property or, or your neighbors?
It, it should not be. I should, I, we will raise their values of their homes.
Right. And you signed the affidavit which contain your statements addressing all the other criterias for the variation?
That's correct.
And we submitted that affidavit to the board?
That's correct.
And if I continue to question you, your testimony will be consistent with those statements contained in the affidavit, is that true?
It will be, yes.
Thank you, sir. Victor?
Hello. My name is Victor Dropso. President of Red Architects, Licensed Architect, 2123 North Damon. Actually, I grew up a block east of that building on that street, so.
So you are very familiar with this neighborhood?
Yes.
That's good. So is it true that what we're proposing here, it's not going to harm the property values? It's not going to adversely affect the light and air to the adjacent properties?
It will not.
We are basically preserving the status quo. All the nonconformities will be kept as they are.
Yes, yes, they will.
And we also submitted your affidavit to the board containing all your statements and testimony for all the criteria.
Yes.
So if I continue to question you, your testimony will be consistent with those statements?
Yes, it will.
Thank you, sir. And we are open for questions.
Any questions from the board?
So the setbacks, the side setbacks are to be consistent with what the building, the, the footprint of the building currently?
Correct.
And the rear setback is because you want to build that into it to get a little bit of extra FAR?
And so, so if I can, if I can just, and I, Victor, if you feel, you can also add. So actually, the open space that we're proposing to decrease, we actually have more open space than the square footage that is required. What we are noncompliant with is the measurement of the diameter. And that's why, even though we have the square footage, we just don't have that precise diameter of that circle, imaginary circle that we are supposed to have. Hence the variation, even though I believe we have like 255 square feet?
Let, let's just say, yes, with, with the square footage of the reg, if we would take the rectangular shape of that space.
Yeah, so we, oh, so we actually provide 245 square feet of open space, which is more than the requirement of 225. So the required is 225. We actually have 245. It's just that the circle is, it's not a circle, it's sort of rectangle. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Any other questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let me be the first one to say happy launch.
Take that, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, that was our last case of the morning session. So I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to Section 2C4 of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? Commissioner Brooks? I vote yes. We're in closed session.
There's someone, someone could be like, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, my next deposition.
It got colder in here.
Question, like poop emoji.
Over and over.
It's not raining or anything. I didn't know it rained this morning.
Alright. Shall we? Let's do it. Oh. Actually, that's a good.
Oh, right.
Okay. Alright, I move that we return to open session. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. I move to approve all continuance requests to the dates stated by me. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes, the continuances are approved. I move to affirm the zoning administrator's decision with regard to application number eighty-five dash twenty-four A. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes. The zoning administrator's decision is affirmed. I move to approve application for calendar number three sixty-three twenty-four Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number three sixty-four twenty-four S. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number three sixty-five twenty-four S. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number three sixty-six twenty-four S. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number three sixty-seven twenty-four Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number three seventy twenty-four S. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number three seventy-one twenty-four Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers three seventy-two twenty-four Z and three seventy-three twenty-four Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. Move to approve application for calendar number three seventy-four twenty-four Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Staley? Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number three seventy-five twenty-four Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number three seventy-six twenty-four Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers three seventy-seven twenty-four Z, three seventy-eight twenty-four Z, and three seventy-nine twenty-four Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are proved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers three eighty twenty-four Z and three eighty-one twenty-four Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for counter numbers three eighty-two twenty-four S and three eighty-three twenty-four Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter number three eighty-four twenty-four Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for counter number three eighty-five twenty-four Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar number three eighty-six twenty-four S. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for counter number three eighty-seven twenty-four S. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for counter numbers three eighty-nine twenty-four Z, three ninety twenty-four Z, and three ninety-one twenty-four Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers three ninety-two twenty-four Z, three ninety-three twenty-four Z, and three ninety-four twenty-four Z. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to recess until two P M. Commissioner Brooks seconds, Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
I vote yes, we're in recess until two P M.